Okay, welcome everyone to our October 7th East Ridge Planning Commission meeting. We've got a couple items on the agenda tonight. Before we get started, it brought to my attention that there was an item that was supposed to be on the agenda tonight that got canceled. So if you're here for 1506 McDonald's, that item will not be on the agenda tonight. I was told that it will be reposted and re-averred by us and letters will go back out again. So again, 1506 McDonald's is canceled for tonight's meeting. Before we get into new business here, we'll go ahead and go with the approval of the minutes for our September 11th meeting. And if nobody has anything to add, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes. So move. Okay, we got a... Got a move, a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Now go call please. You threw me off there.
Vice Chairperson Ringer?
Yes.
Mission Member Miller?
Have stayed. I was the president at that meeting.
Mission Member Spence?
Yes.
Mission Member Tugwell?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight's going to be regards to the address of 1018 and 1022 Leclerc Drive. And to consider the request of James Hathcock to have the property rezoned from C2 Commercial District and R1 Residential District to RZ10 Lotline Residential District and RT1 Residential Townhome District.
That's correct, Mr. Johnson. This is case number 2019, 0129 for the RPA. Currently it's some of C2 and portions of the zone are R1 as well. If you wanted to rezone to RZ1 and RT1 and keep a portion of the remaining that's C2 for some commercial build-out. This is kind of similar to the adjacent Blackhawk Commons that's recently been approved. This build-out would consist of 12 0 Lotline homes along with four townhomes. I believe that commercial use is scheduled for like 4,800 square feet. The only concern RPA had with this, RPA had with it is the dwelling density is going to be up on the rise a little bit, which may increase traffic and some stormwater runoff.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Okay, I guess if the advocate who's representing the app can come down here to the microphone, tell us about it.
Joseph Ingram, the Director of Associates. So, so the application is, you know, obviously we did Blackhawk Commons across the, across the street. And it's really similar in that we're trying to, we've got to get rid of the C2 because we can't put any counter residential in the C2, so we're going to cut out some of the C2. And then we're proposing, proposing to single-family residences that legally front on Leclerc, we wouldn't access off Leclerc since Leclerc is not kind of standard, so we can build our own internal drive with access.
Hey, Joseph. I'm sorry. Could you state your name again for the record? I don't think you had it. Sorry, I'm wrong.
She doesn't know me right now. Joseph Ingram, Ingram, Thor, and Associates.
And I've got some people in the back raising their hand. I will be opening up a public hearing tonight.
I just wanted to have a copy for us to look at, so we understand what you're saying.
Well, if you want to come up here and sit at the front, maybe that'll help you. I don't think we have extra copies for you. And then actually, I can maybe... Okay, we'll go ahead and give the applicant his time to speak. So, Joseph, you go ahead and proceed, please. Thank you.
So, so this is almost exactly the same scenario as Blackhawk Commons where we're asking the, we're asking the proportion of the property to be downzoned from the C2 to the, to the, to the, to the, to the R1. For the single-family houses that would be along Leclerc, but they wouldn't have cars off Leclerc, they just, they front Leclerc. And then we'd have a little piece that would be SRT that would be on Blackhawk, but those would also access. So there's no, there's only, there's one primary drive and then there's, there's a drive that we use just for loading on the commercial property, be on the C2 property. But we wouldn't have no driveways other than those two for any of the proposed units. We've taken, in the bowl there, we deal with our stormwater. We've obviously do our buffer and landscape along, along the perimeter on the opposing zones. And then we kind of did a modified hammerhead so you could get emergency services in. As you can see up there at the top, we kind of did a, we did a hammerhead with this done indoor shore project. We did a modified, go forward, back down. Your private drive is maintained by the HOA, through an HOA or something, on the landscaping. And these are, we're going to say they'll be for sale. These are, they're not proposed to me, they're not programs or anything that we develop and put for sale. Then the commercial, the commercial really, I think, is that property, she's an interior designer, I think she's primarily talking about booking her business for commercial. But the commercial then exists in its own, so we're really not asking for a rezone for the commercial. We're just kind of staying, that's why the loading dock, because interior design, she's got furniture and products like that, that's why, you know, why they're being loaded. And so, so she's just, she's kind of looking at her business and then kind of like, like everyone to do, wants to put his business, that wants to kind of get somebody else a better way to rent. That's it. I really would prefer to answer questions with the remainder of my time list, though.
Oh, yeah. I just want to hang out here, hang out here just for just a minute. Any of my fellow commissioners got any questions?
The 12 houses that you're building, I understand, is 1,700 square feet, do stories?
Yeah, real, real similar to kind of the other things you've seen me do in East Ridge. I'm like, we're glad you're doing it very well.
Now, are they going to have individual lots or?
Yes, yes, they would be, they would also be simple because they do have legal furniture on Leclerc. So they would, they would, they would, it would be self feasible.
Okay, so you're going to have a house and so there's going to be no common area except for the, for the detention farm?
Yeah. That is correct.
My only concern is with 12 houses, it's such a high density development. You get a couple people in there and feel maintain their, their yards, it's cool or come count.
I think, like I said, you're going to have, you're going to have an HOA that's going to, you know, obviously your HOA is going to want, you know, Perry Village as an example. You don't have those problems with Perry Village with the same kind of lots. Because we make, you know, the HOA, you know, kind of sees that people maintaining their yards. I don't think, with ownership, I don't see people are going to let their places go.
Well, I can appreciate what you're saying, but nothing's stopping individuals like myself from going to your line three or four, getting separate them out. Can't stop that.
That's the way they do it.
I know it is.
100% legal. Not 100% compliant with that.
I know. You always look at self, you know, these looking at these, and then you have somebody going there. My issue is just for, for level problems.
Hey, Joseph, did, did you say this is going to be something very similar to Perry Village, you said?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, it's going to be almost identical to Blackhawk Commons. That's why, you know, we kind of came right behind it. It's the same thing that Evans did across the street.
Perry Village, you did, that's your prop time at home?
Yeah.
Very nice assumption. Very nice thought. I drive through there. All the owners are, so far they've taken really good care of it.
Perry Village is done. The last houses are done in Perry Village. I agree. I think Evans done a great job of that. I think he'll do a great job across the street. I think Hathcock's, you know, they've been foolish not to follow Evans, who's driving, he's just driving, the rest of us go with him.
I know everybody's concerned is to, a lot of people's concerns is building homes and having, just turn to flip over to rental property, which probably going to be highly unlikely for houses of this magnitude. And even if they do, they're usually probably worse. They're going to be tenants that take more, usually more pride in keeping up with 30 yards and the lawns. And the HOA is very restrictive as well, too, you know?
I agree.
So, what are the price points of these units?
Don't know yet. I still haven't spent out how much they're going to cost to build.
You know, Perry Village would be a good example. Evans, Evans is driving Perry Village. He has 135, he's coming up, it's pushing 150 in square foot or whatever, so that's, you know, it's kind of...
The price to the end will be kind of...
And like I said, so, you know, the synergy again when you build a cluster like that as opposed to 122, so it's kind of...
Well, I think, I think those houses were going for 250, between 250 and 3, recently.
He's driven the market.
And also, if you know, there's two, two houses, there's a duplex and a house there already.
Yes.
It's going to be gone.
Okay.
Yeah, they're turned out.
Okay.
Yes. So we have the houses on top of the hill?
All that, all you have, you're on top of the hill.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
So we limited access up there.
Yeah, that's why we chose not to try to attempt to access off Leclerc. It's just maybe, maybe a job and half trying to get that over the standard. So it serves everything from that drive.
My concern is the, the Blackhawk is trying to exit onto Ringo Road, be going north or south. It's just sometimes, I live with it, and it's very, very difficult sometimes. Just need one car pulled up trying to, trying to feed through. If you have something like that, and the other day on the freeway, it like never got out.
That was wild, wasn't it?
Right. But, you know, and you put that many more houses on there, that'd be more painful.
Well, how many you have coming in on the Blackhawk Commons? How many?
Sixteen.
That was...
Fifteen.
Okay. So you're almost hoping to have 30 going in on each side of...
Blackhawk Commons, actually, I read this out wrong, too.
Actually, it does. You're right. You're right, it does. Thank you. You're right.
Yes, it was secondary.
Yes.
But this, I guess, you know, what I say is, you know, there's, there's 12, what is that, 11 lots of records? There's, there's 11 lots of records up there.
Yeah.
There's 11, there's 11 lots of records plus there's the C2. So I think we're going backwards. I would, you know, I would say that we're, you know, with this development, we're probably doing less than we could do under the curb zone.
Again, I've changed my time to go into the office. I work downtown. And I need to go in before 7:30 or I can go in after 8:30, 8:45 because other than that, I can't get up on Ringo Road.
That's, that's the thing I notice as I work at the Blackhawk Commons, watching officers pull those trucks up, trying to go through the tunnel, making U-turns. You're right, and I don't know, you know, yeah, I guess there's a problem, but I don't know, I don't, and I don't see that, if we built 11 lots of record in the C2, I don't know if we're adding to the problem. I think we're, we're adding to the aesthetic and just kind of the growth on that end of Ringo Road.
I mean, I've, I've been pretty vocal for years about the traffic situation with East Ridge, but the population of East Ridge has been 22,000 people since 1960. I think the increase in traffic comes from the other 500,000 people who live in this area, using this as a convenient cut through. I don't see 12 houses that are significantly affecting the traffic in East Ridge.
That's 16,000, yeah.
Right, in 16, 30, 70, still not nearly as many as people live here. We've had a static 22,000 people since 1960. I hate the traffic in East Ridge. It's not people who live in East Ridge creating the traffic.
How can you say that? How do you know that?
Census, census records.
No, I mean, how do you know that it's not the people in East Ridge causing the traffic? You don't have people.
But we're not going to get in the dialogue right here. I have everyone, I have the chance for everyone to come up here during a public hearing. Just go, just be, because when you talk and you say things, it's for the record. And if you're not up here on the microphone, it doesn't go on record. So, at this time, is anybody else having any questions for Joseph? If not, I will. Joseph, you want to hang out up here? Probably, yeah, that's fine. That's good. So at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. I'm probably going to start, start from the left and try to wade my way to the right. I don't have a check, assignment sheet up here, so what I'll do is just, like I said, I'll start from the left and move my, move my, make my way to the right. If you'll come down to the microphone, state your name and your address for the record. And we ask that you please keep it at around about a three-minute timeframe, so everyone will have a chance to speak. So at this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing. So we'll start over here. If you want to come down to the microphone, raise your hand. Okay, anyone, does anyone here, does anyone here want to come down to speak for or against this rezon?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Okay. You'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Collins, 3276 Blackhawk Trail, right across from Leclerc. I've been there 50 years on Blackhawk Trail. My children all graduated from East Ridge High School. I graduated from East Ridge High School. I've seen, like all of us, seen some great changes here. At one time, the most desired place in the county where people would live. Everyone would live in, and so, you know what? That did, that technical property values up. Now, you're all aware of how much rental property we have in Chattanooga right there. And my concern is, is what we're, this commissioner, is that you can live in a nice place, but if you don't own that place, you don't have a tendency to take care of that place. Now, you can look at Leclerc now, if you guys haven't been up through there. I had to, I, a guy that does my taxidermy is over in the streets here, Chattanooga, normal. And I, I had asked a favor of him. I've lived there for 50 years. My, my Blackhawk Trail looked like a goat trail for years up through there. He finally spoke to someone, probably you guys, they got that street paved. But I've noticed as soon as these people want to, want to develop this area up here, they got the cart paved in there just immediately. They have no gas on that, on Blackhawk Trail because there aren't enough people that want to apply for it. But I am, I'm concerned about the density problem also. Blackhawk Trail, you guys know, is just barely a two-lane coming off the hill there. And just in the last two or three years, I have a great granddaughter living with me now, who's four years old. So I can't let her anywhere close to Blackhawk Trail now because of the people that are coming up and down here. We finally got a yield sign there after a few years. But you know, I, I don't know who was responsible for taking that traffic light out there and Ringo Road, Blackhawk Trail. Years ago, we had a traffic light there for years. You can get in and out. Like Ronnie says now, you can't, you can't get in and out of the street. I'm retired, so I, you know, I'm, I don't have to be working at home. People that do, it's pretty rough. I, I'm concerned about the density problem there. My sister is in the real estate business. And the comps in our area, just within a six block, not just on Blackhawk Trail, have really, someone made a statement that the real estate values were going up in East Ridge. Are they?
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that, but I didn't know they...
Yes.
Okay. But there again, my only concern is, is I have nothing against people having to rent. I don't have a problem. A lot of people have to do that. I did that with my wife when I first got married. But I've, I've noticed in our area up here around Blackhawk Trail, the renters don't seem to take care of the property. And Leclerc is a prime example of that. That's been an eyesore right there for years, that there's commodes, there's old sea vans, there's all kinds of stuff that was put in that vacant piece of property for years. And the owner just didn't care. He didn't take care of it. So, anyway, anyway, those are some of the concerns I have about that. The traffic, I've probably gone over three minutes, but...
Well, thank you, thank you for your time. Is anyone else?
My name's Earl Wilson. I live at 2910 Pioneer Ridge Trail. My thoughts after hearing this and listening to that, we don't even know what the price of the units is going to be. And that's a significant factor as to who would be buying any of these properties. Two, I'd like to see us require a hydrology study, a traffic study, and then an individual determine what price is going to put on these units before we move into further with this discussion. That might answer a lot of the concerns and issues that people have. I can remember when the traffic light was there, when Buck's Restaurant was on that corner. We're seeing a lot of change. We do need growth on that end of East Ridge, but, you know, like Mr. Miller said, you know, there's a lot of difference between people that own the property and people that rent. We are seeing a generational shift where millennials try, Generation Z's do not want to own property, they want to rent. And I have two of those. One of owns a home, the other doesn't. But with that being said, there is a difference in person having, you know, being committed or being dedicated to the piece of property they own. And, you know, I would like to see units like or developing like this come because I'm at a point where I'm getting, where I don't physically want to be able to take care of a property, or my body's telling me I can't. And units like this, I'm interested in because I don't want to live anywhere else. I can live anywhere in this country I'm going to, but I choose East Ridge because it's the best community within 100 miles of where we're standing right at this moment. And I will change my mind on that. So, just let's have more facts before we go make any decisions to change the zone, so that we can do it, do it right the first time. You know, our coast department's over the way on within five, your property's cleaned up, and we'll take one step forward, three back, you know, Councilmember Johnson, you know, I've had discussions about Leclerc and Blackhawk and some of the properties up there. And we've got no, we're cleaning them up. And, you know, I'd like to see it cleaned up, but I don't want to do it, you know, at the price of the sacrifice that everybody else in the city. The traffic, like you said, it's not, East Ridge residents don't have the problem, but we're the ones that pay the price for those people shortcutting through from Georgia and things like that. My wife's a school patrol officer. She almost gets run over every day on John Ross Road because of the people coming from Georgia, running 60 miles an hour, talking on their cell phone. We need to do due diligence before we move forward. So I asked you guys to tailor this, give more information, more facts, and then less, maybe having a builder and architect and things like that. Do a little meeting with individuals and them up there, like we've done with other things in the past, that seems to help alleviate anxieties and fears and problems of things we've run across in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Do we have any projection, Joseph, do we have any projection on what the houses will the target price for sales? I mean, I know we don't know exactly, that's not your decision, but we know an estimate construction cost might tell us as some idea.
Is that the answer?
Oh, there we go. We have the answer, man.
And James Hathcock, I know most of the houses go for around 110 to all the way to 300,000 over East Ridge. Right, that's where I've been looking up online. And I don't want them to overprice, way overprice, and I don't want to undervalue, you know what I mean? I want to make it to where people can afford it, and also your property's going to go up and hopefully make y'all some money, you know, on the run. But planning, planning on around 230, 250,000.
Well, at 135 dollars a foot, you're talking 229,500. So I don't think anybody's going to put 230,000 dollars in a house and not take care of it.
I want to make it to where I charge enough money for it to where, I mean, I can always come down. I want to ask for enough money to where if they're serious about buying it, I don't want to sell it to just Joe Blow on the road that's not going to take care of it. I want to do what I do with my renters that I have downtown. I want to say, if you want to take care of the house, I want you to have the house. I mean, I don't, they are not going to be for rent. I want to get out of the rental business. I want to sell. And I...
With all due respect, you have nothing to say about what goes well?
Well, not after I sell them.
That's exactly right.
I mean, just...
The only thing that's going to clear that is to have some sort of an ironclad or some association agreement that's part of sale of the property, monitored by the city, and adopting a group license.
I think he, he said he wants to get out of the rental business because he owns, he owns the two duplexes.
Honestly, the other reason is possible is that Mrs. Hathcock is going to have her business right there, so she can't have her interior design business.
We don't know that for absolutely positive assurance.
Putting it for what?
That she's going to put her office there.
I mean, I know she wants to. That's why we're leaving.
You just said that we're wants to.
Well, she wants to. As soon as we get the money, we're going to do it. And, but I want to bring back, my grandfather used to own East Ridge Bakery and Road. I want to bring that back. I want to put East Ridge Bakery back right there.
I just want to make sure that what is developed there is, is going to be an asset to not immediately, but you know, to that neighborhood. I know that the condo, townhouse developments over there off of Frolley Road, they're all sold out. And they were about 179 on the 1E and the 40 additional ones that they built over the past years, so they're all sold. And I haven't had any, I haven't heard any problems from those developments and those that we've been building, but I know some of the others.
I'll, I'll put it in the contract that they can't do that. I want...
You can't do that.
Well, it's an HOA.
You can do the HOA.
I'll make sure it's an HOA.
Yeah.
I'll do everything I can to keep that out. I just want to go put these in, make some, put some money in my pocket, make y'all some money, make them some money.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think it's going to fit, would be a much of an improvement to that area. I don't want that to do much really bad.
I mean, I've been trying to, we've been trying to get something done with this property for years. And I know we tried, probably, I can't, for thirteen years, say, hey, you know, this is not a positive improvement to the area. So that's just my opinion. And the traffic flow, it's going to be less traffic than if I go through and put all businesses along. I mean, it's going to be far more traffic all day long.
Also, how many lots of record are there total? There's 11. So he can build 11 houses there now if he wants to.
This is 12. 12.
Okay, what I'm saying right now...
He's saying right now.
But right now, right now, as the property sits right now, he doesn't need to have it rezoned. He doesn't have to have, he can, he can build 11 houses right there and have the driveways coming out of Leclerc right now. He don't even need us. But what he's wanting to do now is to change some things up, put rezon to the RT1 and the RZ, and put the entrances coming off of Blackhawk, which obviously will also help.
I don't want traffic to come around this way.
But the two cars can't pass on the property anyway, so...
No, I mean, that's what I'm trying to take. I don't want y'all to have to deal with that. I know how much I have to...
Well, you can do it with it, because two cars can't pass on it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm trying to do. Everything, they come in right here. It's going to be 24 to 30-foot line right here. And it's going to go all the way up and between their houses. The water runoff, they won't have to worry about it down here. I'm going to put a detention farm right here. Just going to have it, have the trees around it. Townhomes around the ground, trying, all the apartments don't be on the backside. Y'all won't miss.
Those three cars are up on top. You got to get rid of that.
All right, now, that's my next step. After I get this done, and after I make some money on this one, I'll have the money to hopefully go and do something with those up there.
So you're not going to take them out and start a new project?
Not a whole project, not one, just a pop. I'm going to start my way right here, start building my way right here. I'm going to start my way right here, start building my way around. I'm trying my best to make y'all some money, make everybody happy.
Okay. Um, okay, I have to close the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to come down to the microphone and speak in favor?
They can.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you can speak either in favor or against the rezoning. Please state your name, please, and your address.
Steve Clark. I live at 1026 Windwood Road. And talking about the, the, Blackhawk is worse than the other street as far as you come around Blackhawk or whatever, you almost have to stop if both cars just leads by each other. That's how narrow that street is. It's, when you get down there to where it comes into the, to the Ringo Road, it's wider down there. About a third of Blackhawk is the narrow that you, you can't pass and be comfortable with another car. That's how narrow it is. And that's, that's the area that they're going to come out on right there too. So it'd be a mess there. On top of that, which you don't want, the dead, a rental property in our subdivision, don't have apartments that are two stories high. And I know that y'all put limitations on, so if somebody has an apt building, you have limitations on, on how high it can go in some two stories like these big buildings you're building.
Yeah, so right, so right now, he's wanting to remove two rental properties, the ones that duplex, ones that single family out there. And he's renting them out now. So right now, we're getting rid of the two rental properties and adding additional single family homes for sale. So that...
Well, we know for a fact that rental property brings problems. Bad problems. I'm kidding.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Tom, 1224 Windwood, right next to Steve. I guess you're the builder. Okay, what's your, basically, price per square foot on about 150?
130,000.
145, basically, right now.
Mr. Hathcock, can you come up to the microphone, please?
So if you need to build them at 145, now you stay there. Are they going to be spec? Are you building them all as spec? Or are they going to be your custom?
They can be built as spec.
But why are you building most of them as? Are you sat there like Fort Smith? Are you building all spec houses?
I call the house a free bed.
Okay, but I'm just saying, are you building them as spec? Or are you, or you build them as somebody wants them as a custom?
Whatever comes first.
Okay. We also stay there. If I, I got, if I'm going to buy two houses from you, I can do anything I want to with it.
The house is shit.
Basically, what? H O A don't give a nothing.
But, sorry, let me, I may not remember.
But if you, if I go up, if I go over there and buy houses, I have a lot of rooms. If I want one, buy two of them. Or my house.
Okay, well, right here, I can build 11 houses and rent them today.
You said, you just said you want to sell them.
I did.
That's why everybody can't watch you. If you need a building to sell.
And I want to, I want to sell.
But I'm just saying, I can buy two and I can rent them. I just made it.
To get the money out of them that I need.
You got to get the money.
If I have to build, if I, if I can split the lots and get those houses in, I can make the money I need. If I have to eat my lots the way they are, I can build on them today and rent them. Hold on to them for five years and I can sell them. I'm trying to do everybody a favor and deal and sell to somebody that wants a good.
Well, that's what, I think that's what everybody in our neighborhood, and if you're going to, if you're going to okay it, then we would like it more upscale.
Oh, they're going to be upscale.
Okay, not 175 pound dollar house.
No, they want me, I'm planning on putting, instead of the vinyl siding, it's going to be that very, very nice.
Party plank.
Party plank. It's going to be nice, nice, nice foundations. It's not going to block.
Are you going to be, how many foundations?
Uh, foundation, but then on the foundation, because they're going to elevation. I'm going to have to do elevation. But after I elevate them, I'm going to put some kind of nice thing around them, you know what I mean? Or paint them so they look good. Or I'm not trying to build junk. I'm trying to make sure everybody in there is happy and...
Like, everybody wants to be aggressive. And, uh, if you like something nice in your neighborhood, and what I, I think if, if you spec them out, you know, you're going to put it on my account, I'm saying, I'm going to...
I mean, I'll rent it. I'm going to make sure I don't use rent it. I don't use, I mean, you know, my rentals downtown, I don't use rent. I use things that last. I'm going to make sure they can't be ran down in a matter of a year and a half, two years, you know? I want them to look good. That property's been my family's name for ever since.
I think it's better off if you want to build it.
Yeah.
Build it.
Okay, will they have a problem?
Thank you, sir.
Also, 230,000 by about 17 acres.
230,000 square foot.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, well, Mr. Hathcock, you don't want standing there waiting?
Well, it's not...
We're getting someone.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ryan Marlowe. I live at 1033 Ringo Drive. And my concern is the sewer.
I have sewer already. Actually, the main sewer line running down through there for all the houses up above is already ran directly right through.
Okay, so it's going to fit the, the, over, ran out of the street 1998.
Here, yeah, there a little bit.
Okay.
They're coming down, down the hillside.
Okay.
I've got the main sewer line running straight.
Okay, a little too here on the floor.
Mr. Hathcock, can you talk to the microphone, please, or just try to...
East Ridge came through, put a bunch of gravel down for the water runoff. And you're going to plant here, are you going to fill this valley in?
I'm not.
Where all the water goes?
Around, right here, I'm going to have to take out a lot of dirt to make this flat. I'm planning on putting all the dirt I take out.
I'm talking about like right here on Fort Clark, where they put that? So you're going to raise that?
I'm going to try to put all the dirt I take out of here, over here, all the dirt when I level it out. I'm going to try my best to do those down this way.
Okay.
Try to level it out. That way the water runoff.
We're a little concerned by the water runoff.
Well, that retention pond right there, everything, I put it right there, because everything is running straight to, actually, that pond is right there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
How you doing?
What we're looking at tonight is a site plan. They still need to file their improvement construction plans. And retention pond is going to be sized correctly to be able to get the water runoff. That's going to be signed off by a registered professional engineer. So this is, when you see the pond, it may be, may be, need to be larger, it may be small, it all depends. But they, this is just a site plan right now that we're looking at.
There's a lot more due diligence that's involved before he gets the permits. And I know Mr. Tucker, he says it much better than I do. We're, we're here to decide if this is, that this property is suitable for the zoning, and, and not here to decide if the engineers are going to do their job.
Okay.
So, um, is anyone else? Sir?
Your mic's not on.
Your mic's on.
But now.
I can hear.
Marge Curitz, 3235 Arden Trail. I just wanted to make it known, on Blackhawk, from Arden Trail and Blackhawk to Ringo Road, over the years that we've lived there, I've had death to death with D A. Up there three times. There they go. Man of the company, it was above the, what was coming on their day. On one occasion, they replaced, they, they said they put a liner in the system on Ringo Road. On the other two occasions, it was some type of glue that was in the sewer line. And in fact, I have a man on cover right in front of my house. My goodness, he had to get that, with one problem, it's there. With the number of units in combat, that's got to be considered. Will they handle all the sewer line attack there?
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? At this time, I want to close this public hearing. We got one more.
Yeah, we have one.
I'm waiting Lee, now 1075 Windwood Road across the dead end there. And I just got one thing to worry about. Anytime you get a bunch of houses in an area or, or apartments or wherever, you're fairly nice to start with, and then after a while, you start getting, uh, problems. Uh, legal problems, prostitution, uh, drugs, killings. So I'm looking at, we've got a real nice neighborhood. Hardly ever does something come up missing. You can leave a ladder sitting in the front yard and it's still be there the next day. You can't do that, Chad, no. Lot of places right now, oh, well, I'm sitting my two cents worth.
Okay.
I just, I just hate to see my neighborhood go apart. If we add rental property or apartment that doesn't cost that much, let river rap get in there and end up with a problem. And I hate to see all that good woods go apart too. Uh, we had a lady up on Windwood that cut down 14, 200, 200-year-old oak trees for a swimming boat. So we lost a lot of, uh, air quality there. So we got a nice set of woods down there. Well, they did cut out a lot of the woods, but the greenery's still there. I hate to see that go. I wish that you guys were, if you let this guy do his thing, put a light back down there at Ringo Road and then on Blackhawk. I mean, it stayed there for years and years. I think it came out like 72 or 73.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
In, definitely, like I said, it's my comment, he can build 11 houses right there, right now, if he wants to, without the zoning. I think what he's trying to do is to avoid, uh, for that being opposing on the, the neighbors next, or in the area by having the entrance from Blackhawk instead of a clerk. And he wants to add some amenities to his development to where it's aesthetically, uh, upper scale. We've seen some of Mr. Joseph here, I think he's, but we've, we've seen some of the house, okay. We've seen some of the houses that he's going to compare to, they're definitely high-end homes. So again, like I said, I think, in my opinion, I think that this would be a definite, a, a, a positive improvement opposed to what he can do or what's there now. So, uh, that's my opinion.
Ma'am, did you have something?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Jenny Thompson, 1037 Windwood Road. My husband and I just moved to the area a couple of months ago from Phoenix, Arizona. While we haven't lived in the neighborhood for 50 years, like many of our neighbors, uh, we do see ourselves staying in East Ridge at his home. So we would hope to have 50 years in. And, um, we are in support of things that are wanting to bring, um, a betterment to that area. However, I agree with the gentleman earlier that we do need a traffic evaluation because our biggest concern is the amount of traffic through that area. Because a significant amount of homes and also the townhomes going in there. I want to make sure that we have enough room in that area. So I think we need a little bit more due diligence before we proceed.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to officially close this public hearing once again if there's no one else. Okay, so we're going to close this public hearing and I'll just vote on this. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Hathcock, or Joseph, or Mr. Hathcock? I see none. Thank you, I see. Okay, uh, I'm taking a motion regarding the rezoning.
Motion to approve and pass the law to City Council.
Got a motion to approve and to pass this to City Council for final approval. Do I have a second?
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. I need a second over the first.
I'll withdraw that motion for the moment here.
Okay, we're going to withdraw that motion and...
I, my one concern is, is again the rental. However, knowing that these houses are going to sell over $200,000 each, they're going to command a monthly rental of anywhere from 1600 to 1800 dollars because that's what they're getting in a house, good houses in the city. The other thing too is, you know, talking about the millennials, what about us guys that are the, the older generation? And under the house right now, in the next five or so years, I may want to downsize. I still like to have a house, but maybe not as large as what I have right now, seven one acre. So a lot of the, uh, the older generation, those over 60 or a little longer, and, uh, still they want to have a place to live. So this is kind of a development that I can see, we're offering that ability. I do want to, my one condition I want to add is regarding the homeowners association agreement. I'd like to see, you know, have the city attorney and state manager have input into this document. Make sure it's ironclad as much as possible that you have a homeowners association agreement that's going to have enforcement capabilities. I've been involved in many of these in Florida, because I think we, I think that state invented homeowners associations, uh, development after development, but they do exist and they, uh, they are enforceable. But just on some rate, I think, and also make sure that when the individual acquires or purchases those, that they also agree with those homeowners associations in the form of a covenant or something that goes attached to the, uh, that piece of property. So that's, that would be what I would be hoping for. Other than that, I think the improvement would be an asset to that, that community.
I don't think we've ever had one of those in East Ridge, right? Do we have any idea how that would work? I mean, with the city council?
I think the city attorney, if the city council approves this development subject with the homeowners association covenants, with enforcement capabilities and so forth, I think that's going to be done. And done in other states that I've worked in. I don't see why it can't be done here in Tennessee.
I mean, you see that.
Chad Newton ties it to the plat.
That's exactly.
So, oh, we need to zoom back since Chad Newton does. And we tie, we tie that to the plat, so it's recorded with the plat. You record the covenants with the plat, and then you tie all the, they're going to set it together, they're enforceable. And then you basically, well, you can't, we're talking outside.
See the...
Now let those things sunset.
Yeah, the key that I'm looking at is if there is code enforcement violations on the properties, take, you take the homeowner board of directors to court. And they're the ones that are going to be fined if they don't take care of it.
I mean, and then obviously, Mr. Hathcock is going to be, he's going to run the H O A for the first couple of years since he has a vested interest. You know, he's not, you know, until, until houses are sold, he's going to be the president probably. But, but yeah, the times have changed. So you would record, record covenants, set... I guess if you're, I'm trying to help you with your motion, that maybe it's similar to the City of Chattanooga.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's how they're tied.
Hood, right?
They're, they're...
Hood requirement.
So yeah, but it's in every zone because of the, because there's common area now and everything because of detention bonds. And so we have a common parking area and stuff like that, so every zone has a, has an HOA now, Chattanooga, everything has. So, so I mean, I don't know how you do it, but it would be, and obviously, I mean, it's a legal document.
I know it is.
So, I mean, it's...
It's have, it have that approved by the City, the City Council on approval of the...
Yeah, it'd be something that you would come back, would come out here and you'd be sort of, can hear.
Just go to it.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that wouldn't be extraordinary.
Okay, okay, thank you, Joseph. Mr. Miller, did you wanna make a motion or did, try to keep it as clean?
He's pointing me. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this with the contingency that a homeowners association is included in the plat of this subdivision and would include a covenant that the owners of these properties will not rent them or sublease them, that they will help them and sell them.
You can't do that.
Can't do that.
That's not legal. You can't govern ownership.
Okay.
I learned that through courses.
Wanna make a motion, I'll agree to it.
All right, I'm making a motion to approve the development. I'd like to say an upscale development. I don't know if you have an upscale. I know, I strongly suggest, strongly suggest an upscale development. But I would like to see a homeowners association agreement tied to each individual plat versus Chattanooga. That would establish guidelines upon which to keep the property up there. That would be my motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so just to be clear, we got a motion to approve with the contingency of there being a adequate HOA formed and attached to the deeds in the plat. Is that right? Correct. Second that?
Yes.
All right. Well, that one, though. Jay Michael Hunter?
That's Chairperson Rediger.
Oh.
Mission member Miller.
Yes.
Mission member Spence.
Yes.
Mission member Tuckel.
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson.
Yes.
All right, then that is approved with some contingencies and it will go before City Council for final approval, which will also need to go through two separate readings through City Council before it's approved. Thank you. We got one last item on the agenda tonight. And it's, addresses fifteen oh seven Rebecca Drive, fifteen fourteen Rebecca Drive, fifteen twenty Rebecca Drive and fifteen twenty four Rebecca Drive. Consider their court request of Michael Hunter to have their property rezoned R one residential district to R three residential district.
That's correct, Mr. Chomsky. This is case number one, two zero one nine dash zero one one eight from RPA. Currently, this property is zoned R one and has an existing building on it. It's been, it's been an apartment complex for many, many years. Let's look, let's do have that rezoned, rent that apartment complex in the current zoning, uh, zoning district, be correct. The zoning, and that would allow another apartment complex to be built adjacent to that as well.
Okay, Chad, this property is, is in the border regions, correct?
That's correct, it is.
Okay. Almost thinking we should... Commercial will be a more proper rezoning for this property. You can not, Zap, can you hear him?
I believe he's here.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, you wanna come? Field of state, name and your address for the record, please.
Uh, Jay Michael Hunter and I'm the owner of Colony Apartments, which is on Rebecca Drive and it's fifteen oh seven fifteen eleven Rebecca Drive. And, um, like this fellow says, the apartments have been there for twenty-six years. And they are owned R one, but at one time or another, they were zoned R one. And I was told that, I think the RPA told me, that if I didn't get it zoned for apartments R three, that first law's grandfathered in the way it is. But if one of the buildings burned and it stayed R one like it was, I wouldn't be able to rebuild one of the apartment buildings. And there's three apartment buildings on this property. It's twenty-four apartments is what it is. And, uh, and so what I'm trying to do is get it zoned for apartments, you know, for, I don't, like I said, I know the history why it got to be R one, but bottom line is, there are apartments in it that'll be R three. My understanding is, you know, to just, it's just for the reason that, that if I had one of the buildings burned down, I don't wanna have a problem rebuilding it, that kind of thing. So that's that part. I've got two things going on, but that's that part right there. Buildings that are already there now. On the other side of the street, I don't know how much you guys know about the other side of the street, but the other side of the street, there was a big church there. And it was there for years and years and years. And at one time, it was very vibrant, had a lot of members. And apparently, over the years, the membership dwindled and they were unable to keep the place in good shape. And so I know the city was after them to do something about it, either fix it up or demolish it. And, and it was in bad shape. There's no doubt about it. It had a tarp over the roof and the, uh, the paint was peeling off, you know, and, uh, it was in bad shape and they just had like ten or eleven members. And most of them were the choir members. And they just didn't have enough income to keep the place up, bottom line. And so, and they owned another building that was at the end of the street. They owned practically that whole side of the street up until where, to where the old Kentucky Fried Chicken used to be and now it's a bocce restaurant. And so I bought the first part, and it's a dead end street. I guess you all know, it's a dead end street. It's, it's not a big wide street. It's a kind of a narrow street and it's dead end. And there was an old, I think they call it YMCA building at one time that was not being used and it was in terrible shape. And so the city was, was asking them about that. Also, I think a tree had fallen into the roof of it and it was in bad shape. And at one time, I happen to know that there was a house built between the church and this old YMCA building. There was a house built there. And the house, I'm not sure, I think that the church had a member living there or something. I don't know who, who was living there, but, but the house got in terrible shape also. Really, really bad shape. And sometime or another, it got demolished.
And we condemned it and had it removed.
And so I'm guessing that during that time, or around that time, was when that area, that piece of property got zoned R one, when that house was there.
I believe that was one of those nineteen eighty blanket rezones and it comes off Water Hill Road and this was incorporated into it.
It was.
Okay. And so when I looked at it at the RPA paper, it showed that the part of Rebecca Drive towards the dead end where my apartments are, it is zoned on both sides of the streets, R one. And when you get up there closer to Ringo Road, the zoning change is to C two. And when the, when the church was still there, the zoning line that divided R one and C two went through the building, went through the church building. Now, when I bought that from the church, I decided that it was in such terrible shape, I didn't really want to try to keep it up or, or fix it. So I decided to have it demolished. And so, and indeed, there was asbestos in there and so it cost more to do, but I got it, I got the whole thing demolished. And so that line that went through the church building doesn't really matter anymore because there's no church building anymore. It's just a vacant lot now. And so that, the part I'm looking at is not the part that is on the, the part that's zoned C two. I'm looking at the part that's closer to the dead end, that's right across the street from apartments that I have, to try to get it zoned from, from, you know, I, I guess you could put two houses over there, but it's, I'm trying to get it zoned where I can put some apartments. And I have twenty-four apartments. I'd like to put a carbon copy of what I, not exactly a carbon copy because I, instead of having a two-story building like I got now, I'd like for them to just be like four one-story buildings. Because I've got some senior citizens that live in my apartments and it's just easier for them to have a single level instead of going up the steps. And the building that I have now, that is the two-story building, it's all two bedrooms. And so if I changed that from all one bedrooms to have at least one building, two bedrooms, then I might not be able to build the three buildings there for, for the apartments. So it may not, I may not be able to get twenty-four apartments, it may be less than that. But basically, I like the design, I didn't build the apartments, I bought them in nineteen ninety-three and all those things for twenty-six years. And, um, I, by the way, I was racing East Ridge. And so I've been involved in East Ridge from the time I was little and then owning property. For about forty-four years, I've been involved with the city of East Ridge in one way or another and it's home to me. And I think most people would tell you, this gentleman especially, that we don't have any trouble there. Well, the police aren't called over there and I know you, I've been hearing stories about terrible things happening in an apartment kind of place, but when they're, you know, we're not new to the area and they're twenty-six years. And it's a nice little area, I really like it. And I'd like to have some more rental property on the other side of this little street there. And then the part that's C two on towards Ringo Road, one of these days, I might want to put some offices or something there. There's not a whole lot of property left there that's, that's, that's Z two. And so that's what I'd like to do someday, but right now, I'm not trying to give permission to build something right now. What I'm trying to give permission is to get the zoning changed so that I can put something there on that piece of property that's right across the street from where the apartments are. And to get the property where my apartments are actually sitting, to get that changed to R three for apartments.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. You want to have any questions for Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hunter, have you considered doing anything, anything besides?
No, excuse me just a minute, I, I just wanted to mention this, that if you know where this street is, Rebecca Drive, where the church used to be, of course, it's in terrible shape. Some people would call it an eyesore. Well, it's not there anymore. On the other side of where the church was, is the old steak place. What was it, Western Sizemore?
Was it Ryan's?
Ryan's, okay. The old steak place is there and it's been closed for a long time and there's a parking lot there that's not used. See, that's on one side of me. And then on the other side of me is, on the other side of Rebecca Drive behind my apartments there is the church. There's another church over there. And then at the end of the dead end street there, there's like a, I think it's an assisted living or something like that place. Where the dead end street is, so what I'd like to do, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, is I'd like to put something that I know how to run. I'd like to put some more apartments that I've been very successful at running there. And I, I know that, that dead end street, in a way, you're kind of limited on what you're gonna have there. It's not good, in my opinion, to have retail down there at the end of that dead end street. It's not visible from, from Ringo Road and I just, I don't think that would, that would work. And a lot of places in East Ridge where you might not want apartments, I happen to think this is a good little, little area right here for them. But again, I'm not building something right now. And I'm, but I would like to get it prepared so that down the road, when I save some money, I can build something.
Okay, I, my question was, have you considered doing anything other than building more apartments on this property?
I, like, like you say, I have looked into the possibility of putting some offices, but I just don't think, I'm talking small. You know, like you'd say, if that is a place where you can go get copies made and you, you know, that kind of thing, or, or something small like that, which would go to our, the C two part, I understand. But, um, no, I, I, I know the apartment business, I know the rental business and I'd like to stick with something that I know something about.
So what about just building single-family homes and selling them?
Well, I don't think I could put, there's not very much room there on that piece of property. There's not very much room at all. I think I could put, if I wanted to put a single-family home, I think to, something like that. But I, you know, I think, in my opinion, having something that is the same thing as something that's already there would work better. That's just my opinion. You know, my dear old dad used to say, had a saying that I use sometimes, and it goes, big toe, little toe, that's all I know. So I don't, you know, I'm not an expert. This is the first time I have ever asked for anything to be zoned, so I don't know the correct procedures, you know, so...
Do you know a lot about the border regions act?
No, sir, I don't.
And I, I don't have, I'm not...
Why don't they see me afterwards, I think it's funny to you.
Okay. I know to get this property, I should probably...
You should really get educated on the border regions act and what all it tells because of...
Sure, of these two.
Since this property is in the border regions, you're eligible for, Mr. Miller?
You're eligible for financial incentives, but only for retail development. Generate sales tax, seven cents coming, that's paid to the state and the city gets back four point one two cents. Negotiate how much of that you would get.
Now, with the ones that are retails, where nobody's interested in.
It's the office buildings, it doesn't. It's gotta have retail sales. It's gotta have sales to generate...
Does it?
The sales tax that we get remitted back from the state.
That right. And the, and the depth of each one of those lots over there across the street.
Each alley.
It's, yes.
I know, I was over there the other day, I was walking through the complex and it's...
And that would cause...
It's a very well-run, it's a very well-run complex.
Well, thank you.
I talked to some of the people there and they seem to enjoy it.
Just as a commentary, since I think I'll have to abstain from this, but these two plots next door are about to become the world's largest power source dealership.
You're telling what?
That's not, that's not, that's not his property, that he's not reselling it.
He's rezoning these two right here, right? They're adjoining, the ones that are circled in the thing. So it's two different requests. There's a request to rezonate the split zone, which you know I hate split zones. There's also a request to rezonate existing R one to allow future development, which would have joined the property that I represent.
Yeah, it is not, it's not property that you represent.
Okay, so, right, next door, so it's okay, I don't have to abstain.
I have a secret.
Again, big toe, little toe, that's all.
Yeah.
No, I would appear in all.
We're trying to keep it a very, very nice place and I have got the luxury of being able to tell you folks that I've been running this thing and owning this thing for a long, long time and we've kept it up. And it's a nice place to live. I've had folks that live there, you know, tell me how like, how much they like it. It's, I've been here for a long, long time. You know, like was said earlier, sometimes when you have a house and you got your kids, like I had at one time... like I had at one time, and, and then you get a little older and you want to downsize and you don't want to take care of the yard and that kind of thing, there's a place for, for apartments, you know. As long as it's not in somebody's neighborhood and I'm not in somebody's neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Anybody else have anything else for Mr. Hunter or Mr. Howe?
I have that question. Um, as I understand, actually, we're talking about two separate things here, aren't we?
Right.
So, but the property across the street from you, which, where your apartments are is R one now, right? You want to go to R three, that's correct? Yes. And across the street, that's commercial?
No, that's not.
And it's R one?
It's R one.
That's R one, so... Well, across the street is, that property that I bought across the street is R one until you get up even with the end of my apartment property. And then the rest of it from there to the Sabachi Restaurant is C two.
Okay.
And I'm not doing anything about that. I'm just dealing with apartments across the street from the apartments.
So the, the apartments that he owns now, just...
On the west side of Rebecca.
Yeah, just need to be...
Rezoned.
Property zoned.
Property zoned, so it reflects how it's constructed on this property.
By the way, I ask you a question, is how in the world did that get zoned to R one?
There was a blanket rezoning in nineteen eighty-nine and for some reason, they painted it just down the road across plot lines. And we have a million plots here in East Ridge that are zoned two different things, the split zone property. We don't know why. We didn't have a planning commission and all thing back then. We do now and we're trying to fix them one at a time. Um, and this one is obviously a mistake. They rezoned the later property, the end of Rebecca Drive in oh four to make an office, but it had all been R one during that time. And they just moved it, argument through here and it included existing apartments, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay, I want to have a, open a public hearing. Does anybody have any other questions right now for Mr. Hunter?
What?
Okay, uh, at, at this time, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing and I'll let the, the residents come down one by one and, uh, speak into the microphone, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Santa Eze, I think fifty-three nineteenth and L Street. What's, what's happening on the other side? You know, where Ryans is now and that's also, what's that going to be? We know it's sold...
So I think, I think the Ryans is going to be the new Honda Motor Power Sports sort of building. Something like that.
Sort of. So that'll be the parking, uh, for the, what had been East Ridge Motors will become Southern Honda Power Sports.
Hanging in where the local coffee shop is on that too?
Correct. And expanding it significantly.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Charles McCollum, twelve fourteen Rees. Um, I've been in front of the city council a few times. I'm sure most of y'all know about our government apartments. We're already the densest city in the state. We've already got fifty percent of our apartments. We don't need more apartments, especially not, uh, I mean, East Ridge as a whole is dense. This particular area is also dense. And then, uh, two hundred yard radius, you've also got, uh, Kimberly Apartments and East Ridge Building. The, uh, the lot across the street, the regular R one lot is also ninety yards away from the flood plain, which, uh, sort of means, oh, I don't have to do anything to protect it, but it's going to flood eventually. It, with all regular damage, it's going to flood. I mean, really, with the dense as we are already, we don't, we really don't need any more housing. If we have to build housing, it's already R one. There's room for single family homes. I, I sort of agree with you. We need more businesses, maybe less housing, given where it's at. We've got, there's only twenty-five hundred people, it's more than a mile or something. And as far as the, uh, as far as the history of the apartment, I'm sure most of y'all remember, uh, last year, Mr. Hunter bought this to keep it away from all the animal shelter so that, uh, to keep us in a building that floods all the time. Then turn around and ask the same city, which pulled the rug out from under me, help me make a bunch of money off this same purchase. I mean, I've got a bunch of words for that that I wanted to give you, but I can't talk much about that. I won't.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum.
Our map is twenty-one hundred Big Brown Road. We only have so much, we already, and I cannot, especially after the first hour, we're going to approve some more apartments after what we just put the last guy through. And you're going to approve him? He doesn't even have any drawings. I'd like to see pictures of what the inside of this place is right, right now, look like. I really, before he builds anything else or gets rezoned to do that, I'd like to know what the condition of his existing are. Because I, I kind of feel like he's just going to do what's past him, you know, what's got in, in the past, you know? I just, you know, like I said, we can't get that land back. I just feel like that, you know?
Yeah, I agree specifically. We don't, we only have so much, uh, border regions property in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Anyone else?
John Kenoke, K N O K E, fifteen oh seven Rebecca Drive. So he didn't want the animal shelter there for traffic reasons, but adding more apartments is going to increase traffic anyway, um, with the Mexican, or, sorry, Hispanic grocery that's in that, I think is the old bank. They come down our street flying to cut through to get in there, so traffic has increased already there. And it's a very narrow road, so it's hard, but two cars going both directions, you know? We have a tree that overhangs and kind of, you have to go around it to go down the road. So traffic is my concern there. Also, that land is a little higher than the current apartments, so water runoff would be a concern that I had also. Because when it does rain, it floods all the way down the street to the, um, to the dumpster back there. So if you have to throw your trash away, you're waiting through like basically a small river. So those are my concerns.
Hey, thank you, sir. Anyone else? I see no one, so I'm going to close this public hearing. And before I entertain a motion, I just want to make sure, does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Hunter, Mr. Howe? No one? Okay. Well, uh... Some good points made, so I'll just, uh, I'll entertain a motion in regards to this, uh, zoning request.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change, um, the west side of Rebecca Drive from R one to R three and deny the change to the east side of Rebecca Drive and retain R one.
Second. Uh, Ma? Do you think we need to do that on two separate votes? What, uh, I wish Kenny was here to...
We can, I think we can do that.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, you want to do that?
Let's go ahead and do it.
That's up to you, sir. Oh, wrong question.
RPA lists the addresses here as fifteen oh seven, fifteen fourteen, fifteen twenty, fifteen twenty four. Actually, it's only fifteen oh seven and fifteen fourteen, so the actual addresses aren't listed, okay?
The addresses are on our map, though.
When are the addresses on the west side of Rebecca? That would be fifteen oh seven. That's it?
Fifteen oh seven and fifteen fourteen?
I'm showing fifteen oh seven.
Oh, okay.
Yes, okay.
Fifteen oh seven is the existing apartments now that are wanting to correct zone. Fifteen oh seven, is that correct?
Yep. Okay. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the change from fifteen oh seven Rebecca Drive from R one to R three.
I'll second that as long as we delineate that it's the western portion of that.
The western portion, that's right. And it's the address, we're talking about the west side of Rebecca Drive where existing apartments are in the wrong zone.
Okay. I guess we're clear. And we got a, we got a motion and a second. Everyone call, please.
House Chairperson Renninger.
Yes.
Mission Member Mallor.
Yes.
Mission Member Spence.
Yes.
Mission Member Tuckel.
Yes.
Chairperson Chanty.
Yes. Okay, now we've got a different matter of, uh, fifteen fourteen, fifteen twenty, and fifteen twenty four, which is the, the three vacant lots. I hear a motion in regards to that rezoning request.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request to change that from R one, but would encourage him to look at that front most piece and consider a change to R two or to C two, but deny the request from R one to R three.
Got a motion to deny. I think you... Got a second. Any questions? Everyone call, please.
House Chairperson Renninger.
Yes.
Mission Member Mallor.
Yes.
Mission Member Spence.
Yes.
Mission Member Tuckel.
Yes.
Chairperson Chanty.
Yes. Mr. Hunter, that rezoning request was denied. You do have the right to take it to council for final approval, if you wish. I would suggest, this is me, was to maybe look into the Border Regions Act and educate yourself a little bit on that and maybe find, uh, some more, maybe some more appropriate use for that property.
Do you think C two would work all the way down?
That piece that is connected to the church, that would be an obvious split zone and would absolutely, I think everybody would approve that being C two since that's a split zone.
Coming on down to the, the dead end.
Right. Uh, now, for the pieces behind it, I mean, that would be an RPA change because those are separate plots, but the one that's in the front is a split zone. It goes right through the middle of a building.
Yeah, if it was, it's still there, you know?
Right, sure.
So what do you think about what I'm asking you? What do you think about where the C two line is now? And, and it's R one, what it is now going down on that side of the street. What do you think of the chances of, instead of doing R one, that I would try to get a change to C two all the way down to the end of the street on that side?
I don't think we can stay there.
Yeah, I don't think we have, are allowed to, but if you want to chat with me or Mr. Mallor afterwards, we can explain the border region program.
Okay.
And that might help you make a decision, either one of us, I'm sure, we have a chat with you personally.
Okay, and that would be only for C two, right?
Right. Well, commercial, not C two, but commercial.
It's commercial, but...
C one through four.
C one through four, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And again, I think Mr. Custer, he's not here. Mr. Custer's really good at explaining your option.
And he's probably your best option.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Okay, that's all the items on the agenda tonight. Thank you all for coming out and, uh, this meeting is adjourned.